So, good evening. We're going to begin our, the workshop portion of our meeting from seven till 7:30, at which point we'll move into our regular agenda. So for workshop, we are going to discuss, continue to discuss, the new local law on the table around the train station zoning. Natalie's gonna walk us through that.
Yeah, so this is a continuation of the conversation from the last meeting. I forwarded, or I think Mercedes posted the materials and they were reforwarded to the board. So, just as a reminder, right now, the waterfront area is kind of broken up into two zoning districts, three if you count the remaining industrial districts that are still down there. So waterfront park and then the waterfront development district. And so, the proposed local law that's in front of you, that's been referred from the councils in regards to modifications to the waterfront development district, so not the parks, right? So that's mostly kind of, mostly west of the tracks is the waterfront parks, those remain parks. The, the local law that's before you is regards to the WD currently. There is a proposal to change the name of that district to the train station district to help distinguish it from the parks. I think there's a little bit, there's been a little bit confusion in front of the council and in public comments between the two waterfront districts and whether what we're proposing is in regards to the waterfront parks. So, there is a proposal to change the name of that district to the TS or the train station district, and to make slight modifications to the zoning district, so that essentially kind of everything east of the tracks is in the, in the currently waterfront district, proposed TS district. And then the modification, the main modification, is reducing the lot area within that district. There's, I think it, right now is at, I'm trying to pull up the thing, I think it's proposed to bring it down to, Jen, is it four or three?
Three.
Three.
Yeah, five to three.
Just, there's a few parcels within that district that fall below that. That's the main proposal, but I think in going through that, the council and city staff noticed that there was a number of kind of redundancies in this zoning district where sections that are already regulated in terms of process and aspects like that are already governed by other sections of the code. So those redundancies were removed. And then there were a few additions. This is one of our kind of hybrid form-based districts where there's a number of design regulations, like what you see in the CMS district, in the linkage district. So there were also a few additions there in regards to design for parking structures. So that's where we started the conversation last month. I think there was comments from the board of wanting to spend more time to be able to look through that, specifically with the proposed language in regards to regulations on, design regulations with the parking structures, and, and other aspects about process and how traffic is reviewed. So, I will say, I think we can, I think I want to open up to the board to hear if comments have been further kind of mulled over. But I think, one of the things I did want to bring up is that you will always have the ability, and I know kind of train station area, traffic, circulation, vehicles accessing, exiting, is a large concern, so that will always be something the planning board can look at under seeker, that's always going to be part of your review. But whether we want to add language about that to the district, and I think there was some discussion about massing and, and how that gets represented by applicants, and what materials we might, might want to request from applicants when they're coming before the board. So, that's where we ended, and I'll kind of turn it over to the board to continue the conversation.
Thanks Natalie. Yeah, I think, and thank you for your summary, that's really helpful here, and the summary you shared with us. One thing, before we get to your summary though, I'm noticing, and I just want to bring it to the board's attention, the Greenway Trail Committee's letter and recommendations there, sharing with us around specifics that their committee is hoping that we will pass along. So maybe we touch on those first. I don't imagine, because it sounds like Mercedes, we just got that letter? Yep.
I can just read it.
I can, we can add it to the conversation, so just bringing it to your attention, so you know it's there, but really quickly summarizing. Their recommendation is to make sure we're including the trail. Hang on one second. Including the trail in, I'll just read this. "Including the trail in the TS zoning revisions is consistent with past zoning precedent." "Zoning explicitly provides for trail easements and developer responsibilities. This approach has led to real, on-the-ground trail development." Quick question though, before we dive too deep into this, where, where does the zoning currently stand relative to the Greenway Trail?
I'll search right now. I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's necessarily specific recommendations for how that should be incorporated, so I think this letter has also been shared with the council, and I don't foresee, I think it's a great add, I think the language could be strengthened, let me.
Oh, this is, this is addressed to the council? Right, so good.
Yes.
So, we urge, I guess what we could do is just simply.
Second it, or yeah.
Reinforce our agreement with the trail committee. So ultimately, what they're saying to the council is.
It's very first.
Yeah, no, no, I just, certainly, I'm not saying we should do that right now, I'm saying, bringing it to your attention, and then I was going to summarize. "We urge the council to amend the TS zoning language to reflect the city's commitment to the BHRT and require its implementation." I think, prior to us all reading it and digesting it, generally, personally, in support of reinforcing that message to the city council. So, okay. So we'll all read it. What is the, and then the other question, just practically speaking, what is the timing of, for the city council on this?
The council does have a public hearing scheduled for Monday, so they will be hearing public comments at that time, and I think they have done circulation to county and other entities. So, I, I think the goal is to be kind of collecting all comments from the public, from the planning board, in the next week or two, so that they can act on that in their future working meetings. But, they do have a public hearing scheduled next week.
Okay, so it's at least two more months.
Yes, I think our goal should be to, for today, yeah, I think our goal should be to try to wrap up comments back to the city council tonight, so they have them for their public hearing on Monday.
Okay, so you all better read that letter now.
It's not very long.
It's short.
Can somebody else?
It's a short letter.
It was Mercedes circulated.
A lot of words.
Earlier today.
I can't access my beacon email.
Okay, I will forward that to you.
I have a question for you on this zoning.
I have yours.
So, as the parking structures are not permitted.
I don't think I have.
Gmail.com is my email.
But as loud as an accessory structure. Aren't they building two parking structures?
We're not reviewing a project, we're just reviewing the code as Mercedes email from 2:40. Yeah.
I just wanted to.
That has been looked at, and they feel comfortable with the language that.
Yeah, actually we can say it's accessory to the train station.
Are you, are you both finished?
It was him, hey, don't look at me.
It wasn't. It was I.
I know.
Russo.
Noted.
That's where the capital R.
So, some of the things you summarized and highlighted here, relative to things that we should, as a group, put some further definition to for the council, have to do with numbers one and two of your note to us. The first one being, oh, yes. The first one being submission requirements related to massing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so one of the materials I did want to share with you, that was in the email that I forwarded, and is in the code that's posted online, is that attachment four. So I didn't think we had some conversation at the last meeting about diagrams or massing and stuff, so I just wanted you to have what's in there. So there is the waterfront development map and illustrations, this is attachment four to the zoning code, which will be carried forward. And this shows, and again, there's no changes proposed to the heights in this district, these, this district, right, that, what, what is currently permitted as the heights is, is proposed to be continued.
Yep.
I shared attachment four with you, because that gives some illustration, because there is a change in height, that was, when this code was originally adopted, that was done based on view sheds through the waterfront area. So none of that is being touched in the proposed language.
So, right, go ahead.
You go first and then I'll.
No, I was going to say, just relative to what would be extremely helpful, both, I think to the applicant and to the board in reviewing this, is, and I've, I've seen these before, and it's somewhat involved, but, you know, a three-dimensional representation, and especially for this site, based on the topography, and the, and the grade changes you were just describing.
Mm-hmm.
On a three-dimensional topo, an overlay of the buildable area in both dimensions, height and volume, as well as view shed, view shed constraints.
Okay.
Right.
From the city as part of like an attachment to the code, or like requiring it from developer, from applicants?
This is what we were talking about, it's a middle requirement, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And, a hundred percent.
I'm just going to ask, so that, just to confirm, the code, the proposed code says that the maximum height in the south, in the TS south is 32 feet? From what I'm reading? No building in the TS south area shall be, shall exceed 32 feet in height, as measured from the above-average grade at the curb line of Beacon. What's the maximum height for the, the north, TS north?
TS north, let me see. Yeah, I'm sorry, I haven't reviewed this, because we're not changing it, so let's see, from TS north. If you want to continue your comment, I'll pull it up and I'll confirm for you, but I'm just going to look for that right now. Were you proposing changes to?
I just wanted to know.
Oh, what, what it is, yeah.
Yeah, no, Kevin, I don't, I don't know if you want to add anything to what I just mentioned relative to those submission requirements, but I know you've been pretty vocal in the past about being able to visualize all of the elements, right? Obviously, they're, they're codified, they're written, right? You've got setback requirements, you've got height requirements, you've got the view shed requirements, it's all in black and white, in words.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, the ability to actually start a review with the baseline understanding of what the, you know, the sort of full build could look like, right? In three dimensions, in context of, and again, back to the topography, the topography in the site, and any other constraints.
So different from the renderings that we often see, like contextual renderings, right? Where we often see applicants do like a contextual rendering.
Just light box.
Talk to me about view shed. What do you mean by, what are requirements for view shed?
Well, so, take for example, like, the view sheds are described as very specific, like from point A to point B and through XYZ. So, I'm sorry?
We have to create or identify.
Well, I don't know, that's a good question.
Local waterfront plan has them.
Yes, so protected view sheds are identified in the local waterfront revitalization plan.
So maybe having them do kind of mat, like massing view shed analyses from those locations.
Exactly. So, so for example, if you've got this three-dimensional site, with a three-dimensional box, not rendering, it's just a box of the bulk area that could be built. And what impact, for example, a protective view shed has on that box, right? Because it could slice right through it, right?
Yep.
Those are all things that sort of set the stage for the context of the full, potential full build.
So, view shed is, I apologize, you're protecting the view.
Right.
From everything around. So, like we were just talking about that, that, what's that Rodney's place up there?
Edgewater.
Edgewater.
Edgewater has now blocked the view of the bridge from certain aspects upon 9D. That would be avoided by showing this in a 3D model, and the angles in which you would see what we would call precious views?
Protected.
Yeah, if that's a protected view, if it's a protected view shed, then that would be.
So what we don't get in 2D or renderings is exactly that, like what they're blocking, what we're going to get when they finally build it, and what views are going to be removed. So, I think where you're going is right, exactly where we want to be.
Pretty specific language here, too.
Specifically, the proposed language says, "For the TS north area, building roof lines should step down from north to south to follow contour and elevation of the topography directly to the east of the development site." And this is, "To preserve important public views from upland locations, so not to cut off views of the river," I guess, you know, important view sheds.
Right.
Yeah, and lend to your question, maximum heights are all in the same area, 223-41.7. So north of west may, I don't know if you found that section while you were looking at that. So it's, height may not exceed 75 feet from the average grade of the existing Metro North parking.
Thanks.
And then you have those attachment fours kind of showing what that looks like in terms of stories. And then, there are identified view sheds, if you look at the LWRP in section, in section three, they go through, so Main Street and 9D is a view shed, Beacon Street and 9D is a view shed. So from there, I think, so what we're asking for is the applicant, as part of your submission, and I think this is already, can be required based on the LWRP and seeker and zoning is, this is part of their analysis.
Yeah, and I think that the difference is, yes, the planning board would make sure that the applicant ultimately submits that before making any sort of assessment, but let's require it upfront.
Yes.
Initially, with the submission package, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think it could save us a lot of pain and headache later.
Isn't a lot of that being proposed to be removed, though? Those sort of submission requirements for the site plan, in red? Aren't those, isn't that part of the revisions that are being?
I think, anything that is duplicative of submission requirements.
Right, but I don't, I have to tell you, I don't think it is duplicative. A lot of these are specific to this context. The, the issues having to do with the site, with the garage, with the facade, they're very specific.
The LWRP stands separate from the zoning code.
No, no, I'm, I'm not talking about that.
So those view sheds identified in the LWRP, any project that falls within that boundary.
I was just talking in general about the submission requirements, that are called out, that are being proposed to be removed, right? And that many of them were obviously specifically crafted for this location, and reference the, the, the specific plan that was, the planning document that had the envelope that's, that's part of the waterfront concept, right? And so, what I want to be, what I'm concerned about is that that debated and voted on language that was done sort of democratically, is sort of being taken out here, with the assumption that it's all just housekeeping. And I don't think it is housekeeping. I think that there's specific things that were, were intended to give the board more power to affect the design, right? We may quibble and change some of this, we might have disagreements, but this has already been through a process, a democratic process, right? And I, and I think that it's.
So I think you're referring to the language in section G, right? Where, that's where I'm seeing it, where it talks about, like the language here is, "The proposed architectural treatment of views and viewing points from the site to the Hudson River, to the site from the Hudson River, and from the River Park and Dunning's Point, and over the site from any view shed identified in the LWRP."
Right.
So that language is in there. I think what, what's, why it's stricken from here is, that is required. That's required regardless. If you are developing in the LWRP, I think those view sheds have to be considered. But I think what I'm hearing from the planning board is, you maybe want some of that language to still be, to be retained.
Yeah, and there's a specific, and I'm afraid I was, I, I should have been more prepared for this, but there's a specific section that deals with the parking garage, and shielding and other things having to do with the parking garage. And I feel that.
Some of that's still in there, but, you know.
No, some of that's taken out, if I'm not mistaken. You see what I'm saying? And what I would feel more confident about, if there was a comparison of the, where it showed what was duplicative, right? And what was, and, and showing the, the location where it was duplicated, right? So that we could confirm that that's the case, and it would then highlight things that were specifically crafted for this location in this particular thing, which isn't, that hasn't been done. There was another thing that was described to me, which was the map change, and the, I was told that there are, there's a, there's a proposal to change the zoning map because of the way the parcels are set up. And, all I see is, I see one map, not two maps. I'm not seeing anywhere where it shows where the parcels, what's being proposed, and what has, what the change is. Do you see what I'm saying?
We saw those last month.
What's in your package is, yeah, what's in your package is what's being proposed, what's anywhere else on the city's website is what exists now.
Okay, so that's, like I said, that would have been, okay.
We, we looked at those side by side last month.
Yeah, we had them last month.
Yep, yep. So, again, I think back to this idea of this, applicants for these particular parcels, the submission requirements being pretty prescriptive around.
So looking back at some of that language that was stricken, and maybe retaining some of that, those specific requirements for submission requirements.
That, and, again, I can understand wanting to make sure that it's clear and not duplicative, but making sure that, to Kevin's point, we're not removing something that is.
Yeah.
Prescriptive enough around just exactly what we were talking about. Like, for example, the sections go only so far. They don't show the full context, the full site development potential. You know what I mean? They're diagrammatic.
Oh, yeah, this attachment four, yeah.
They're simply diagrammatic.
Yeah.
So again, it's, the idea is, in three-dimensional form, so that it can be clearly understood, the, the bulk max build.
Yep.
Based on the code.
Yep.
With any other constraints, like view sheds overlaid, in three dimensions, in a three-dimensional, you know, GIS map accurate context of the site, especially as it relates to topography. So again, like, for example, you know, I don't know if it's the case, but there's, there's instances where, you know, the height, the height restriction might conflict with a view shed requirement, right?
The max height may, and the board may choose to, yeah.
And you won't really know that until you actually see it in three dimensions. That's exactly my point. So, I think just as a tool for all of us, and to be able to set the stage early, to Jennifer's point.
Yeah.
Around those parameters, really just the parameters, before we get into all the other details that we're going to get into around aesthetic and what have you, traffic.
Yeah, I mean, I think I, I feel comfortable conveying that comment. I think that is fully within the planning board's right to require that for any project, but I think the, the desire here is to still have that really clearly.
Yes.
Explained in the code.
Yeah, I mean, John, we've all struggled sometimes when there was vague language, right? Or not specific language to hold people to a higher design standard, right? And the more specific language for a specific location, especially ones that have been sort of vetted, the more, I think we have the ability to improve the outcomes, you know?
Sure, agree.
I have four comments on design standards, language.
Two.
That, and one of them, I'll start out with the, the parking decks, because we're talking about it a little bit. The language in here says, "Screening should prioritize green screen or similar landscape treatments such as climbing vines, living walls, or planar systems to soften the appearance of the structure. When green screening is not feasible, alternative architectural treatments, including decorative facade panels, louvers, pattern masonry, or other high-quality materials, may be used." I want to ask the board the question of, are any, do we want to take any of these out, or recommend that, like for example, louvers? You know, I've never seen a louver out of, out of parking structure screening that looked like something that was aesthetically acceptable to me, especially on the, on the waterfront, you know, the train station district, so. And I, you know, if we don't, if we leave something in that we're kind of like, you know, we have, we feel conflicted about, it's going, we're going to be stuck with it, somebody's going to say, hey, louvers are permitted, it's an acceptable solution in the toolkit here. And I, you know.
I think, my opinion would be that, there's a little bit of design flexibility in there.
As long as we, as long as we muscle it.
Right.
You know, and we don't always.
Because, I don't know, I don't know anybody who's been in a place where they built a large parking garage, I should say. Oh.
Yeah, I don't know anybody that's commented upon the urban qualities of a large parking garage, and how welcoming they were, you know? It's a really tough thing to make those structures feel like anything other than.
If it were me.
Yeah.
I would kill louvers and keep green screen and maybe decorative panels and pattern masonry, where we have more control over the.
Okay.
Design features. And it's just, I'm putting it out there for discussion.
The louvers, I'm sorry, the louvers, when you do parking structures, there's a, a particular annoying level of lighting that comes along with it. And louvers tend to shield that, so I don't want to get rid of it.
I've just never seen a good-looking one. I've seen parking structures that have these big galvanized louvers.
If it's a green screen or if it's a leaf, it'll, it'll maybe die during the winter, and then you have no shielding, so you're taking away an option for shielding. Whether or not it meets your aesthetic approval or not, I think, the more that we can give them the ability to shield these things, because they're atrocious, these structures in their lighting levels.
Yeah, I think, I think there is, there is flexibility around just what you mentioned in terms of flexing our muscle, and the ability to make sure that if louvers are being recommended, that there's something that has an aesthetic quality to it.
The other thing, too.
Can we hone that in more?
Yeah, I mean, so there is language in here, so after the list of, you know, decorative panels, louvers, pattern masonry, it says, "They may be used provided they achieve an equivalent level of visual mitigation and complement the design of adjacent buildings and streetscape." And that's equivalent level of visual mitigation to green screening. So, there is some limitation there.
Because it's saying, here's the standard, is green screening.
Green screening, but if you can't do green screening for whatever, you know, it's not feasible.
There's some choices.
There's some other choices, but those other choices have to be.
Right.
Achieved at an equivalent level of visual mitigation.
It's just subjective, so.
You know, I agree with you with louvers, I mean, they're not, they're not good, but my, my concern all about this is that the, the, the most pollution that we can have come from, at least in my mind, is just really bad lighting all along these areas, right around the train station, because the train has horrible levels, right? And then you have these big developments that are not being considered about their levels. Now we're putting parking structures in there, right? Without levels, and we're, we're referring to, you know, the, the lightened sentence in here, it just says, "Properly lighted to promote safety and encourage pedestrian use." That sounds like a prison to me.
I was going to ask, what is proper lighting and?
Right.
What's excessive?
We can get into, I mean, we should be referring to like IAS guidelines, or some other kind of thing. We have the opportunity to really make this into its own section, with its own requirements, and avoiding things like louvers, which we can.
If we can.
But we would have to make the requirements more strict on the lighting levels and the shielding, to avoid any kind of architectural louvers to take its place.
There is more language, I'll just point you to section E, which is where you start development standards, that's, if you go to E, there is just basic lighting standards outside of that, so I just want to, E7.
E7.
And I don't, I'm not saying that it's fully extensive. It's page 14.
14, thank you.
Yeah, but that talks about exterior.
Right, so seven.
Oh, yeah.
I think what we're talking about is the lighting from interior.
Streets, dives, walks.
Yeah, and exterior.
Yeah.
I mean, it's talking about 15-foot-high poles, that's, that's a parking lot. So we're just making parking lots.
Let me just interject something, and it, it seems like, particularly with regard to lighting, and I'm glad you're here, because I think this is something we've generally not paid very much attention to in the fa, in the past. It may really be that we need provisions in the code that address lighting all over Beacon, not just in this area, because I mean, it's more pronounced when you're down in that fishbowl with houses and developments.
Absolutely agreed. This is before us right now, which is why I'm like.
It's a good place to start.
If we have a chance to put it into, you know, properly in there, by referring to other guidelines, right? I apologize, I don't know what 223-14B is.
That's our lighting.
That's our code.
That's the ones that we typically look at, where you, we've kind of talked through those.
We've kind of talked about those, okay, so they're all kind of generalized and all.
But I think.
There are new, kind of development levels that we can talk about, and there's new guidelines that we can apply, that will take everything down lower, and make everything softer and less pollution-based.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's, I do think that's a good recommendation, I think we have been, I think, to David's point, talking about that on a more like general, but I think if we could, if there's specific language, maybe one or two things, and maybe it's a piece now, and then we do general later, but I think if there's some language there about referring to dark sky compliant, or, you know, things like that, that's not in there yet, that I think that's a, I think that's a, something that can be added, specifically for the waterfront. And I don't know if it's talked about in the LWRP, I know it comes up a lot. up a lot when you're talking about waterfront developments.
I could gather this information, I just won't have a response to it swiftly, like today, and I don't know the process of putting that language before anybody.
I think at following this meeting, Jennifer and I usually try to summarize the comments, and then get them to, get them to John before the letter gets, so I think there's a day or two of getting, getting some additional language to us to incorporate in that letter.
Yeah, and my personal feeling is, because right now, what the code is doing, what this provision, this new revision is doing, is it's, it's pointing the applicant to the-
The general standards.
The general, right, right. So rather than wait for the general, we should incorporate it here.
Mm-hmm.
I'm curious, are there any, and forgive me if I glossed over them, but are there any requirements around a sustainability level, or any other kind of electric-
In terms of like, green, like building design?
Green design, electrification, you know, limiting fossil fuel use, that kind of thing.
You can't have that in new construction in Beacon.
Yeah, all buildings have to be electric.
Okay, so we're all, we're all electric now, okay, good.
Yeah, and they follow New York stretch.
Do we, okay.
I'll be really quick. Do we feel like we are, we have strong enough language for facade breaks? You know, it's the same language, we always have, larger buildings shall incorporate significant breaks in the facades and roof lines at intervals of no more than 35 feet. When we're often dealing with this on Main Street projects, it's, I think we, we generally have kind of relatively simple solutions, like a brick pilaster every 35 feet or something. I feel like this, if the scale of this development is large, it's going to require more muscle solutions, and if we feel like that language is okay, that it just requires something every 35 feet?
I, I think, it's always hard when we say a break, and it must be a pilaster, because then we're kind of locked in.
Well, it doesn't say, it doesn't say it must be, and it, it shouldn't say that, I'm just saying that-
What I would say is, is that some, some visual relief, which I think it says right now, is appropriate, and whether 35 feet is, you know, too much to provide that visual relief, I think that's the sort of subjective piece.
I'm just saying, are we comfortable with this language, that we can do more than a pilaster, that we can, you know, ask for bigger stuff if these are larger buildings, and we want more significant breaks in the facades and roof lines? Are we comfortable with-
Yeah, I think, again, if we're, if we're gonna, so we're at time, we're actually over. I think if there are other things that you want to make sure that, just as Jim has mentioned, he will get back to us with in the next day or two, you want to make sure that we get to Natalie and Jennifer, we should, we should make sure we do that.
Just to close out, there is a section on energy-efficient buildings in addition to the city standards, so there is, you must meet or exceed LEED silver rating or equivalency.
Oh, excellent, okay. Yeah, I missed that. Yeah, and the city, we call it Local Law 97, so I forget about stretch.
Yes.
Can I make one final pitch? That we changed the name to the Transit District, as opposed to the Train District. I mean, you know, just don't call me late for dinner, I don't think it's a deal killer, but it does reference, that would make it clear that it's an intermodal, I don't know if that's the right word.
Not just trains.
What? It's not just trains, it's buses, it's hopefully ferries, and other-
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I was going to say, call it Ferry District.
Ferry District. Uh, yes, we would have to just, we already have a T District, so we just have to think about what that abbreviation would be. Transit Station, it could still be TS, but-
Transit Development.
Instead of train.
TD?
But that's-
Transit Development.
TD is the Transition Development, am I right?
Call it the Community District.
Is it the T District?
T, it's just the T.
It's just the T.
We don't, yeah, we don't include District in the abbreviation, so if it was Transit Development, then it would be TD.
The TD. Okay.
But I think the comment of, 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 of the potential consideration of the name of being more expansive than just train as the transit available in this area.
Yeah, I think that's a fine suggestion. Okay, we're at 7:37 right now.